Manana Sizus, todos samzu and welcome to your thirty-eighth Guam legislature. Yes, we're up. Once again, manana Sizus, todos samzu and welcome to your thirty-eighth Guam legislature, the people's house. Thank you for being here, everyone, this morning. This morning, public's hearing is conducted by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations and is called to order at this time, zero nine zero one, on this Monday, November seventeen, twenty twenty-five. First notice of this public hearing was disseminated to all senators and media outlets on November seven, twenty twenty-five, with its second notice disseminated on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. This hearing, the hearing notices were also made available on the Guam Legislature's website and our legislative calendar and the government of Guam's public notice portal. The committee today will hear testimony on the following bills and nominations on the agenda. First of all, we hear from the Office of the Governor's Appointment and Supporting Documents for Anthony P. Beneventi, member of Board of Commissioners Civil Service Commission. The next item on the agenda will be Bill number one ninety-five dash thirty-eight, introduced by Vicente A. V. Borja, an act to add a new subsection eight-four-nine-point-one-eight to chapter eight. Title one, Guam Cone Annotated Relative to the Renaming George Washington Football Field as the Loring-Santas Cruz Football Field. And the last item on the agenda will be Bill number two-zero-eight dash thirty-eight COR, introduced by Telo T. Taidegui. It's an act to amend public law thirty-seven dash one thirty-five to provide a one-time two-hundred-dollar supplemental cost-of-living allowance COLA to eligible retirees and survivors who last rendered government service with the autonomous agencies and public corporations. At this time, I'd like to recognize my colleagues who have joined me today. On the far right, we have a ranking member, Senator Tina Muny Barnes. Of course, my colleague as well, Senator Jesse Luhon, my office mate as well, thank you for joining us. Senator Chris Burnett, thank you for joining us, and Senator Telo Taidegui, thank you, senators, for being here this morning for this public hearing. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance of the Legislature in Guam's general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chairperson before speaking and shall state their full name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and nature of the bill on the agenda or nomination. Personal inferences to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal from the hearing of any member of the legislature in Guam or the public audience who fails to observe proper decorum pursuant to the thirty-eighth Guam Legislature Standing Rules. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in immediate removal from this public hearing room. With that, we now proceed to hear testimony in the appointment of Anthony P. Beneventi, member Board of Commissioners Civil Service Commission. And let's see who we got signed up here. Actually, can we just get anyone who signed in for oral testimony to come forward and then we will have the nominee to testify on his behalf and be prepared for questions? So, anyone for oral testimony for Mr. Beneventi? Chairman, Mr. Cabo, we'll go ahead and proceed with you first, and thank you for being with us this morning.
Sizus Masi, Mr. Chairman, I do this, Ramdatoros, Senador, and board members, committee members, in honor of C. Juan K. Cabo, Chairman of the Commission Board. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity for me to appear before you to provide my oral testimony on behalf of Tony Beneventi. Before I start that, giving the details of Tony, I would just like to share something about Tony and I. Tony is my colleague. We worked together for the Department of Administration for more than, I believe, sixteen years before we decided to separate. And Tony is the person that handles the employment management brands, and I handle the classification compensation plan brands at the Department of Administration. And through those years, Tony and I shared a lot of issues regarding employment matter. And now we're together at the commission. So Tony went, we separated after about sixteen years of working for the Department of Administration. He went to the GCC, I went to the commission for a greener pasture, meaning for promotion. Then we lost contact. For many years, then I found out that he retired, and then I retired myself. And you know, when you retire, you become, you do a lot of cleaning around the yard, throw trash. So happened that I was down at the, this was a true story, happened that I was down at the Harmon dumping station, and I was dumping my trash, then Tony was there. And so we had a little chat. We gave each other's numbers, and so we could get back to, again, communicating and sharing our retirement things and some employment matter. So I became a board member at the commission thereafter. After that, I thought of Tony. And Tony is one of the person that I can trust. He has the wide knowledge of skill in the human resources. So when I found out that we need board member at the commission, I made a contact. I said, Tony, I need your help. We have vacancy for the, to be a vacancy for the board. Are you willing to step in and be a public servant? And he agreed. So I contacted the director, said, hey, can you start working with Tony, have his paperwork done? And so we can submit it to the governor and the legislature for confirmation. So that thing happened, and he was confirmed, but only for three years. So he's, the three years had expired, now it's back before you for reconfirmation. So that's the beginning of my story with Tony. And there's one thing about Tony. He's a man of good character. He's a man of innate knowledge and abilities and skill in employment matter. So let me just talk about Tony, about his knowledge in the human resources. His knowledge in the rule of the law of Guam, the employment, which is the title four. His knowledge in the EEO, unemployment opportunity. His knowledge in the adverse action law. His knowledge in the grievance law. His knowledge on the Employee Protection Act law. And his knowledge in the post-audit law. All those laws were created by either, by this body. And we are the administrator of the merit system. So Tony has those knowledge that when he make a decision, he based on your law, no different from the other board members. And I stood myself to, that I comply with the law and the rules and policies and procedure. So that's Tony's strength and his ability, and his ability to exercise his right, his knowledge in the field of any case before the commission, the decision that he makes very, very thorough and independent and analytical as well. That's Tony. About his skill, he's very, very careful. That man is a very, I would say, what do you call that, meticulous, but he's very skillful in the decision-making. He lay out his reason why he's deciding on that case. And one thing, the beauty of being a commissioner with Tony and the other board member, we're very independent. We don't share information when we hear a case because we rely on facts, evidence, exhibit, whatever documents that's come before us. So we never share any information. We share, we lay out our decision independently. That is the board member responsibility and duties. And Tony has that very well. Now, Tony's, there's something unique about Tony. He's a very humble person, but he's very tough in making a decision, and he stood firm on his decision. Because his knowledge and skill are very strong because of his years of experience with the Department of Administration and GCC. And, and, and he is a person administrator of GCC, and he administer and interpret the law and the rules, and that's the strength of him as well. Now, going back on Tony, Tony and I share the same thing. We share, we're very compassionate, he's a very compassionate person, very understanding person. He has a very good character. And that's the strength that I know about Tony. And when he make a decision at the commission, it's fair and balanced. And why is that? Because of your law, because of the policy that you set up for us to do it. And I know that that's part of your responsibility under the Organic Act, that this body create law to ensure that the merit system is carried on. And that's the mission and mandate of the commission. Now, in regards to the, to Tony, Tony is a man of character. And that's the respect that he got. He's a man of vision. He's a man that makes sure that the mission and mandates of the commission are carried on to the extent that is fair and balanced for the parties, for the employees and for management. I don't want to say more about Tony. I think a lot of things about him speak for himself. And, Mr. Chairman, and committee members. Tony is now, is going to be sitting in front of you for his reconfirmation. And to me, that speak volume. And for Tony to appear today, asking for your consideration and confirmation, really is something that we have to think about it. Because he's coming here as a public servant, to provide those services to the public. He's going to spend time at the commission, three hours, four hours, we spend hours and hours twice a week, just to hear the case of the employees and management. And one thing also, Tony, that is going to appear before you, is going to carry on the mission and the mandates of the commission, and also the guardian, to be a guardian of the merit system. And that's, that's one thing about Tony. I therefore, Mr. Chairman, Senator Duennas and committee members, I humbly ask you and all of you, Senator, to consider and confirm you to be a CSC board. And that's one note. It's very hard to field the Civil Service Commission Board. There's a lot of people out there that I made a contact, even the director can attest to you that it's hard. A lot of them willing, but then they back out. Because the commission is a very complex board. We're part of a semi-judicial. And you know that every, a decision that we make is going to go to the court. And in closing, Mr. Chairman, I ask you again to please confirm Tony, so he can continue his public service and to carry the mission of the merit system. I thank you.
Sizus Masi, Chairman Cabo, and thank you for your testimony once again. To my primo, Danny Leon Guero, please proceed.
Good morning, thank you. Chris Duennas, Senator, and oversight over the Civil Service Commission. Thank you, Jesse Luhon, for being here. Thank you, Tina Barnes, for being here, and Chris Malafunkshen, thank you also, and Telo, thank you to be being here. I'm glad you're all here to hear what we have to say about Tony. Tony started in twenty nineteen, on November, and to this point, it's six years. I'm really surprised that he is, and I'm very happy that he wants to go for reappointment. He kept calling me because he had to go off island. Danny, can you get me, you know, schedule early and all that? I said, okay, we'll try, we'll do that. So anyways, I am so happy that he wants to continue and, and put in a lot of his time and effort into serving government of Guam, Civil Service Commission, come up with, oh, I'm sorry too. It says, please be close to the microphone. Yeah, thank you. And, and I'm here to testify, and just give you a little background of Tony, okay? His expertise is actually in human resources, both in the government and in the private sector. He worked as an Employment Management Labor Relations Officer for the Department of Administration for nineteen years. He also was HR administrator for Guam Community College for five years, used to be GCC before. And he also, in the private sector, HR for Staywell for nine years, and for ITNE and IPNE for nineteen years. I was looking for him when I first started working as a commissioner at the Civil Service Commission, because I heard that he's retired and, you know, he might be available. And I was so happy when we finally found his number and we called him up. And I'm so happy to know that he's going to stay. This are one of the few people that, it's very hard to find people that actually understand government services. And of course, as a board, we have seven members, and collectively, not all of them are experts in government of Guam HR, okay? And it's good, it's a good to have that mix, you know? It's really good. And what I like about the Civil Service Commission is that it's not a decision by one person, it's, you need four votes to get a decision, okay? He also received a bachelor's degree from the University of Guam, and he trained in labor contracts, labor management relations, EEO, labor standards, and HIPAA. He's a professionally certified human resources. He was also a recipient of the Doc College recipient, and also, he's a member of the National Society for Human Resources from SHRM. During the six years with us, Beneventi developed and provided a high level of skill, thoroughness and ethical decision-making in routine complicated appeal matters. Even the most routine can be very difficult to make decisions, you know? He has demonstrated expertise and talent while serving the community as a commissioner. I'm in support of Mr. Beneventi's confirmation as commissioner for another six year, due to his commitment to the Civil Service Commission system. I am entirely confident he will continue to serve the people of Guam in a judicious manner. Thank you very much. I think I forgot to introduce my name, myself. My name is Daniel Leon Guero, I'm the executive director of the Civil Service Commission. Thank you very much.
Sizus Masi, primo Danny Leon Guero, and thank you for your testimony, especially as the director supporting and continuing to support, very important. So now we'll go to attorney Fred Nishihara. Please introduce yourself once again and provide your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Senators. My name is Fred Nishihara. I'm the administrative counsel for the Civil Service Commission, and I respectfully submit this testimony in strong support of the confirmation of Anthony Beneventi as commissioner and vice-chairman of the Civil Service Commission. I've had the opportunity to work with Vice Chairman Beneventi and to see firsthand the qualities he brings to the commission. He understands the mission, he respects the process, and he shows up prepared every single time. One of the things that sets him apart is his background, as you've heard both of my, my bosses say. Background is a trainer in the government of Guam, and because of that experience, he knows both sides of the workplace, the challenges employees face, and the responsibility that management carries. And that perspective shows in a way he approaches cases. He listens, he asks the right questions, and truly tries to balance the needs of both employees and management, which is exactly what our merit system needs. Another quality I want to highlight is his willingness to make tough decisions. Vice Chairman Beneventi does not go along with the crowd just because it's easier. When the evidence calls for it, he is willing to stand by his conviction, even if it means casting the lone vote. That kind of courage is required of our commissioners. It's essential for a body that relies on, that relies on independence and integrity. He is fair, he is consistent, he respects the process and works toward timely, well-reasoned decision, and he treats everyone who comes before the commission, that's employees, attorneys, agency representatives, with professionalism and respect. For these reasons, I believe that Vice Chairman Beneventi is exactly what the kind of person we need on the Civil Service Commission, and I respectfully ask the committee to support his confirmation. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Please vote for him and his confirmation. Thank you.
Sizus Masi, Fred Nishihara, attorney. And you're an attorney for civil service at this point, right?
That's correct, in the Civil Service Commission.
Thank you. So now we'll call forward the nominee, Mr. Tony Beneventi, to introduce himself and, you know, commissioners, can you go ahead and just stay in case the, the panel has any other questions? And Attorney Nishihara, please be available in case there's any questions from the panel. Sure. The man of the hour. Sure, no problem. Take your time, sir. So when you're ready, prepared, just introduce yourself and your testimony.
Good morning, Senators. Good morning, Senators. My name is Anthony Beneventi. I'm here as a nominee for, the governor's nominee for the Civil Service Commission Board. I currently serve as the vice-chairperson, my, as a three-year term, filling for a vacancy. I'm up for renewal, I mean, reconfirmation, and I'm here to, I'm here before you to ask you for your favorable consideration. But I want to thank, you know, Senator Muny Barnes, Senator Ada, Senator Gomatato, Senator Luhon, Mr. Chair, Senator Duennas, and Senator Barnes, and Senator Taidegui. I'll just read you my, my letter. Buenas en half a day. Thank you for holding, thank you for holding this hearing on my nomination to the Civil Service Commission Board. I am deeply honored to appear before you today. It has been a privilege to serve in this capacity for the past three years, and I wish to express my sincere gratitude to Governor Doris A. Leon Guero, Lieutenant Governor Josiah Tenoire, Civil Service Commission Chairperson, Mr. Juan Cabo, and Mr. Daniel Leon Guero, CSC executive director, for their continued trust and confidence. I'm happy to say that my wife also agrees that I can continue. I humbly request your favorable consideration so I may continue serving. I remain committed to upholding the integrity and objectives of the board, ensuring fair and impartial reviews, and supporting the intended application of the government's merit system. The experience gained over the past three years, combined with my training and work experience, will enable the board to effectively work through complex issues. This includes ensuring all relevant factors and policies are considered, evaluating evidence, understanding context, and verifying compliance with all policies and labor requirements. I look forward to collaborating with fellow commissioners to fulfill the board's mission, including suggesting improvements to enhance efficiency and fairness, learning from each case to develop more effective strategies. My term as commissioner has provided me with valuable firsthand experience and personal perspective, and with emotional investment in fulfilling this responsibility. These include feeling the weight of making important decisions that directly affect people's lives, carefully navigating complex issues while balancing empathy with fairness to ensure impartial outcomes, and addressing situations where decision may conflict with competing interests. On a lighter note, I also have learned to be more mindful when in public, politely sidestepping questions or comments regarding high-profile cases, and becoming more aware of public perception, and be prepared to respond appropriately to questions or criticism. I approach this situation through self-reflection, by seeking feedback, and by drawing upon a basic understanding of human nature. I recognize that such challenges are expected and come with the responsibilities of this position. I also fully accept and understand, and understand the time commitment required. Many weeknights and weekends are spent preparing for hearings, often requiring extensive review and preparation. The seriousness of this responsibility underscores my commitment to maintain the highest technical, I mean ethical, standards and supporting the mission of the Civil Service Commission. Once again, I thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today, and I respectfully request your favorable consideration on my nomination. Sizus Masi.
Sizus Masi, Mr. Tony Beneventi, and before I go to the ranking member, Senator Tina Muny Barnes, for her questions or comments on the nomination, I'd like to thank Vice Speaker Tony Ada, also the vice-chairman of this committee, for being with us this morning, and also Senator Sean Gomatato. Thank you for joining us. Good morning to you both gentlemen. Ranking Member, Senator Tina Muny Barnes, do you recognize at this time?
Sizus Masi, Mr. Chair, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to the nominee, and I want to extend my endunklen, a Sizus Masi, to you, Mr. Beneventi, for your continued tenure to work closely with the Guam Civil Service Commission. And as I was looking over your employment history, I was in awe that, you know, fifty years later, when you first started government of Guam in nineteen seventy-five to today, twenty twenty-five, which is fifth year, I just want to say that it literally gives me a sense of admiration and respect that you would want to continue to give back to our island of Guam. Your expertise, being with the Department of Administration from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen ninety-four, the Guam Community College, as a human resources administrator, you were there in nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-nine. Then you went into the private industry, you were in the medical profession with Staywell Insurance from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand eight, and then IT- Insurance from 1999 to 2008, and then ITNE, IPNE, from 2008 to 17, and then in 2019, you were with the Guam Civil Service Commission, where you continue to share your time, literally, like you said earlier, and your colleagues that are on the panel here with you, about your expertise, about your thoroughness, and just how good and, and literally how much you give your heart and soul to this commission. And I want to say from my heart that I will support you at this level for your reapportment. And I want to say thank you, and thank you to your family, most importantly, for allowing you to give back and to continue to serve. So I want to also thank the governor for giving your appointment, your reapportment to us, but more or less the leadership also from the Civil Service Commission. Because like, as I was walking in earlier, we talked about it, it's so hard to find volunteers because you really, it really is almost a volunteer job, because what you have to do, the criticalness and the sensitivity of all the cases that come before you is really, really critical, and I want to say thank you. So, Mr. Chair, my only comment was to support Mr. Beneventi in this effort, and thank his family for giving him the opportunity to continue to serve Civil Service Commission for our government of Guam. Sina Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, ranking member, Senator Tina Muny Barnes. Senator Taidegui, you recognized at this time?
Sisus Maasi, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my colleagues, and good morning to everyone here from the Civil Service Commission, and of course, those who are here supporting you, Mr. Beneventi. You know, I did some homework on you, looked at some of your voting records, and especially asked individuals who had to deal with you personally on a perspective of where you're sitting, that is. And this is, I can't divulge that person's name, but I would like to read into the record what this person said. Half a day, Senator, and good evening. Among the members of the civil service, Mr. Beneventi, he's the only one that listens to employees, adheres to the rules, and pays careful attention. He's actually, he actually should be the chairman, if you ask me. As for knowing him, I actually don't. But because of my situation, I've had firsthand experience dealing with the Civil Service Commission, and that was my observation. Mr. Beneventi, you didn't need any of these three individuals to come here to testify on your behalf. Coming here based on your merit and based on the research that I did, you alone here is going to pass your nomination because of the things you're doing. And I hope you pass on those morals and ethics that you shynely put out there to your other colleagues that sit on this board, because we've heard concerns about them. So I hope that by sitting in this position and wanting to be back there again, that you stay and keep your moral grounds and continue to do the good work that you do at the Civil Service Commission, because we are watching. It's not all about sitting here and throwing kudos at whoever wants to sit on commission. It's a job and a responsibility that's going, goes deep into our community, employees who could lose their homes, their jobs, and also employees who are put in a position that could be unsafe for other employees. And I know you put that balance into perspective. So I kindly ask that you maintain what you're doing, and thank you for staying on this, on this board, this very, very important board that we're keeping an eye on. And I have to ask, the ethics classes that are a responsibility of any elected official, as well as directors, as well as board commissions, since you've been in this position for how long, three years? Is that correct?
Three years.
Okay. And you did take the ethics course, that's required?
Yes, I just completed it.
You just completed it?
I was informed that it expired, so I went online and I took the course.
See, and that was my only thing to ask, and you've, you nailed it, so I'm glad you looked at that. And you might want to look at your other colleagues and ask them to make sure they look at their expiration on their ethics courses, to make sure they're in compliance, because it is every four years that you have to go back and renew your license, I mean, renew your certification, okay? So that might be something you want to, and also, the last thing I have to say is, I always look at websites, you know, and especially with boards and commissions, to see if they're posting their minutes of their meetings online so that people can see it, and decisions that are made. So if there is some time in your very busy schedule, sir, and I ask that you stay on top of that, so that there's complete transparency at the Civil Service Commission. So, other than that, my door is always open. If there's anything I can do to assist you in keeping the straight and narrow and the fairness and transparency of the Civil Service Commission, please feel free to call me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Sisus Maasi, Senator Taidegui, and this time I'll recognize Senator Lohan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
You know, I fully endorse, of course, Mr. Beneventi's reconfirmation. After all these years, still wanting to continue to serve, and he can't be a bad person, he's a JFK calendar. And it looks like a mini reunion here. I see Susan over there as well, and all we need is Steve Guerrero here now too, Mr. Chairman.
A moment.
You give him a call. But again, wanting to serve after all these years, and you could go and retire, but, you know, as Mr. Calvo had mentioned, you know, you've got the institutional knowledge, the wisdom, the skills to continue. And I've read, of course, some of the decisions from Civil Service Commission, and it's right, what Senator Telo Taidegui had mentioned in regards to paying close attention, of course, to arguments put forth by both sides. Again, it's important that your wisdom and your knowledge, institutional knowledge, be passed on to even newer members that may come on after, you know, our time is off, right? And to be replaced by other folks. But that being said, again, you have my support in knowing Mr. Beneventi now for over 50 years now. But again, thank you for wanting to continue to serve the people of Guam. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Sisus Maasi, Senator Lohan. Senator Barnett, you recognized at this time?
Sisus Maasi, Mr. Chair, and Manana Sisus to the people of Guam. Thank you for watching on our TV channels and our YouTube, and thank you, Chairman Calvo, Director Leon-Guerra, Attorney Nishihara, and Vice Chair Beneventi for your presence this morning and your testimony. I, like Senator Taidegui, did some digging too, and I was surprised that not a lot came up. And I think in this situation, that might be good news. I mean, if you Google Anthony P. Beneventi, not a lot of scandalous stuff comes up there. So I did kind of review some of the decisions that you've made, but I think more importantly, I asked around about your service with the Civil Service Commission, your tenure, some of the votes that you made, some of the decisions you've been involved with. And for the most part, I receive favorable opinions of you, sir. So I'm still contemplating my support of your nomination, but I wanted to just ask here in your testimony, one part that really struck out to me was where you wrote that your term as commissioner has provided you a valuable firsthand experience and personal perspectives with emotional investment in fulfilling this responsibility. These include feeling the weight of making important decisions that directly affect people's lives, carefully navigating complex issues while balancing empathy with fairness to ensure impartial outcomes, and addressing situations where decisions may conflict, may conflict with competing interests. That's a couple really good sentences in there, sir. So I know a lot of people ask, why do you want to continue to serve, especially when it's what, $50 a month? Right? So tell me why you want to continue to serve, and more importantly, how do you feel your role as a civil service commissioner aligns with protecting the merit system and the classified employment in the government of Guam?
To answer your first question, why do I want to do this? I feel that I'm a really strong proponent for civil service employment rights protection, but also tempered with accountability. So with that, and I've actually, you know, over the years, read the paper, it's like anybody else, and CSCs in the news, and, you know, read the decisions, the issues that they face. And, you know, I know it's an important one, it's a critical one, particularly when you have employees coming before you, filing their grievance or appealing their adverse More so when I came on board, I really found the importance of the role of a commissioner because fairness and, you know, and balancing that, the role to govern and the employee protection needs to be balanced, and we can't take that for granted. So many nights I spent, you know, look, we meet twice a week, and so a lot of my weekends, my weeknights are spent reading. And not just reading, but doing the research, the background thing. And, you know, thank God that I have the background to actually understand these things. So when you're, when you're in front of parties, attorneys on both sides, you know, they're going to give you what they want you to hear, but it's up to me to know basically what else is there to consider. So my, when my three-year term ended, even before that, I was thinking, you know, time to just throw, you know, just go home and do the honey-do list, you know? But I took a break for a month, a month, because we went off island, and all I did was watch TV. It just drove me nuts. So I called Dan when I got back, and I say, "Dan, am I still eligible to, to, you know, I mean, is it too late for me to come back?" She goes, "No, let's contact the legislature and have your reconfirmation hearing." I said, "Okay." But anyway, just, I really feel that this is a really critical job, not a job, but a role, you know, that we play, and I hope that my services would contribute to that. Yeah.
Is that why Director Leon-Guerra said he was surprised that you chose to serve again?
I think he was praying, but...
And I think Mr. Calvo, I don't know if we're going to be threatened by a lawsuit from Fox News, because he said you're fair and balanced, probably like 10 times. Are you fair and balanced, sir?
That's one of the difficult things that we would go through every time we do the Empathy, being sorry for the employee that's before you, you know, their livelihood is on the line right there. But like I said, with, you know, with trying to weigh the issues in front of you, you know, usually how I approach these things, I look at management. They have the burden, in most cases, in an adverse action, they have the burden of proof. And I look at management, and I put them to the grind, you know, make sure that they follow every rule and regulation, and, you know, if they pass a test. But I also look at the employee based on the situation involved. Is management consistent? Do they apply the rules fairly across the board? Things, all these things come in a mix, and I really have to look at these things. I'll give an example, leave policies, which is really the, you know, sometimes managers can be very hardcore about that, but they're very nice to another employee, you know, and all that stuff. So when an employee comes and files a grievance because of denials, you know, we really look at the history here, the environment. So it's not just based on what the rules say, but how the rules are applied. So we have to weigh those things. I believe I'm fair. If you ask a party that lost, they probably say, "No, I'm not fair," but that's the game, you know?
I know you mentioned leave sharing policy, but just in your tenure, your three years as a commissioner, and obviously you have wealth, half a century of experience in human resources, do you see any areas with the Civil Service Commission or with our HR rules and regs that you think need to be addressed, either administratively or through the legislature, in terms of maybe Civil Service Commission reform, et cetera?
There was, there's still some challenges that I see, you know, particularly with like, for example, the grievance procedure, you know, timelines, there's, you know, those are still being challenged, you know? But we basically, based on, you know, the best information that we have, but not, you know, we even question about the, does the grievance procedure work? To me personally, it works, because we hear the cases at our level. If we don't hear any cases, that means something's going on at the lower levels, okay? So the employee has a right to approach civil service, and we do hear the cases. There may be challenges and difficulties in the process, but that's where the oversight comes in. We can look at these things. But my personal opinion is the procedures that we have on hand do work, you know? Even if managers and supervisors, directors deny your grievance or even ignore it completely, you still have the option to go up to the Civil Service Commission where you'll be heard, you know? So it does work. Other things, adverse action, again, we still have, you know, we've made decisions consistently on the same issues, but sometimes, you know, parties will challenge these decisions, even if it's already been, it's been the consistent decision of the commission over the years. And for me, if I'm wrong and they challenge it, I want to be told that I was wrong, you know? I don't have any ego problems, you know, I don't swear, you know? Managers have told me in my face that they don't agree with my decision. I said, "Okay, appeal," you know, challenge it. But, you know, that's, for the most part, I'll give you an example, the 90-day rule for adverse action. In the current rules, that was promulgated, adopted by DOA, you know, 40 years ago, it still says 60 days. So that's an example of what's being challenged even up to today. You know, management did not take action within the 60-day that's identified in the rules and regulations, but the law, you know, supersedes that. The law was changed to 90 days. Now, I understand why it's difficult to remove that page from the rules, you know, but it's, but again, we follow the law. That's just one example of things that need to be updated. The rules and regulations need to be updated. It's been 40 years. My concern with the rules are maybe make it more, much clearer regarding timelines, you know, for example, when you... you know, for example, when you mail, mail the final adverse action, you know, because you can't locate the employee, does the mailing of that document start the time, the time clock? Okay? That's still being argued today. But things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Beneventi, this is very insightful. You know, in your testimony, which was well-written, you also talked about being mindful in public, politely sidestepping questions or comments regarding high-profile cases, and becoming more aware of public perception, and to be prepared to respond appropriately to questions or criticism. How do you do that? When someone comes and they say, hey, you know, that Jeff Lemo case, oh, pretty crazy, or, you know, whatever the instance may be, how do you kind of sidestep, navigate? But then I guess the other thing I wanted to ask was, people approach you according to your testimony and have questions or criticism, have you ever been approached to make a decision one way or another in a pending case?
No, the answer to that is no, but let me share, it was a rude awakening when I started this role. Go to a dinner, you go to gatherings, especially if your name was on the first front page of the paper, you know, regarding your case, and people would come up to you and say, hey, what the hell are you doing? You know, what are you thinking? Why? Basically, you're just politely, I'm sure you senators do go to that all the time, you know?
A little bit, little bit.
You know, but it was a rude awakening for me, I said, wow, what's going on? You know, so I'd basically learn how to, you know, politely, you know, maybe change the subject, or, you say, I can't talk about it, you know, and all that stuff. But yeah, you learn, you learn to accept, and sometimes I even decide, you know, if I get invited to a dinner and I said, and I know who's going to be there, I said, maybe I shouldn't go, I shouldn't attend that, maybe I shouldn't go to the dinner, you know? But I, but yeah, I just, it was something that I had to learn to cope with, you know?
Thank you.
But no, your answer about whether anybody's tried to sway my, no, absolutely not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beneventi. I don't really have anything else, I know, I want to hear from all of our Loring Cruz supporters, and then also I'm a co-sponsor on the COLA bill, but, you know, we're appointing you, and I believe the term is what, six years? Six years? The term? Anyway, we're going to appoint you, and then, as you know, we're going to have a whole new governor next year, I mean, no matter what, so you don't have any issues serving under a different governor?
I tell you what, if they don't want me, whoever it is, I'm doing this as a volunteer, you know? If you don't, if I don't, if I'm not needed, then I go home and then just do, live my normal life, that's, no, it's about, you know, nothing. But if they want me to continue, I will continue. I know the appointments for six years, but like I said again, I respect the authority that comes in.
Thank you, Mr. Beneventi, and thank you for your willingness to serve in this, to continue serving in this capacity. And Sidozmasi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask questions.
Sidozmasi, Senator Barnett. Senator Gumitata, you're recognized at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Beneventi, for wanting to serve. You could be doing something else, but you're here now, and appreciate you coming down and talking with us this morning. I wanted to just touch on a couple of things that you mentioned, and from your experience, you were talking about some of the things that have been kind of stuck in time. You mentioned, you know, policy that has not been updated in probably as long as I've been alive. And I just wanted to ask you, if you can think of a single policy that can be changed, that can help make the work of the commission be a little bit more efficient, what is that
I've actually thought about that question, you know, my, even, you know, I mean, even when I sat with the commission, you know, what sort of things that we need to update, actually, the commissioners and the staff of the, you know, the director, the legal counsel, and the staff, we actually did talk about this thing all the time, especially when cases are brought up before us. I say, you know, we're scratching our head, this is, wait a minute, you know, this, we haven't looked at it this way, but it just, I mean, there might be stuff out there, but nothing that really comes to mind.
Oh, come on, you got one? I know you got it somewhere, I mean, you didn't serve for all those years, I think there's not one policy you think that can be changed right now that can make this work a little bit more efficient. Don't give him any tips, you're not the one being confirmed, he is.
I'm kind of nervous right now, so...
I'm just, it's a simple question, I hope you can give me at least one. In those discussions, we're not in those discussions with you.
Well, it's not more policy, well, it is, it kind of tied into policy. One thing I have noticed that's not happening right now with GovGuam is training. When I, Chairman and I were, and even Fred and Dan were active, you know, regular employees, I mean, we were constantly orientation, training for supervised, supervised, the rules, you know, all these things. I don't know if it's happening anymore, I don't, I don't see anything. My greatest concern when management comes in and takes action, either trying to deal with grievances or taking adverse action, I do sometimes see that there's a lack of direction from maybe DOA, or, I mean, I, again, this is a response of each appointing authority, but, you know, the structure and basically knowing, there are some agencies that come in really top-notch, they're prepared, but then there are some that I just feel that, you know, I mean, there is cause for action, but they just messed up the entire process. And that's my main concern. So I just kind of drill that down to focus on training itself. Maybe these people are just not aware of what to do, or if they did, did they seek advice from somebody else, and are they getting it? I don't know.
And that's why I asked that question, I think, if you look at some of the documents that you can regularly get from the Civil Service Commission, if you're a GovGuam worker or you're a director, if you look at even the font and the layout, it looked like it was actually produced in 1975. And this is, my second question is, when I think about some of the policies, I think of the Mini Hatch Act, right, for example? In one section it says, okay, part-time employees cannot participate in one section, and you look at the other half of the document, it shows, oh, part-time employees actually can involve themselves in certain activities. But the law, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Beneventi, was written to prevent party bosses from getting involved in the merit process. Today's merit system and in 2025, it's very, 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 very difficult for folks to influence a process, would you agree?
Sure, I, you know, I, yeah, obviously those are part of the issues that we face, you know?
Yeah, and I ask that is, because when I think of the work, it sounds like, do you think that employees don't really understand what the role of the Civil Service Commission
Well, that's, I go back to the training again, you know, orientation. When you don't do these things, people don't know what their rights are. So, and because of that, they don't know where to go, what, they don't know whether they're, you know, there's misapplication of the rules, and so they just, you know, continue on with their work life, not being able to question because they don't know better. I mean, you know, they don't know between right and wrong, in terms of how the rules are applied. So, but yeah, that's...
And I guess that's for me, I think that once you, because you're going to get the support of this legislature, including mine, and I'm hoping that once you get reappointed and you get back on the board, probably one of the very first things you probably ought to do is help give the direction to your, the commission and say, hey, you guys got to get back in there, and employees need to know what you're all about. It just can't be a one-way street where, hi, welcome to GovGuam, you signed, and then that's it. I think that it's, I hope that you would be, one of the first things you do is direct the executive director to push and get that training done, and be a little bit more consistent with it across the board, I'm hoping you could do that for us.
I'll give you one example of training. I remember sexual harassment, even workplace injuries, you know, when we started doing, when you start doing orientation or training on, orientating employees on what sexual harassment is, or what, how do we, you know, what's a work injury, how do you handle it? Once we did, once you start doing that, you're going to see a real increase on people filing, you know, harassment. I mean, not that it's a good thing, because then you know, you know, you kind of uncovered the, what's going on in the workplace. And so that's why I see training as a real important aspect of employment here, is because people got to know. Those are the two examples, I mean, you know, that all of a sudden, workers' comp becomes, you know, much more involved because people are now reporting their work injuries.
So maybe your agenda item you'll add for the longest, for the balance of your six years, should be a training component, and then get an update on calendar for that, I'm hoping.
Yeah, I have to actually commend my, the Civil Service Commission staff, they, you know, because we do ask them particularly about the Mini Hatch Act, you know, whenever the season's there, where the staff is out there, training, going to departments and training, and they train us, also the commissioners, you know, because if those cases come before us, you know, and eventually they'll come before us.
Yeah, and including those modern types of cases, you have now, you have, these phones are now becoming a lot more dangerous in the workplace for certain activities, and I'm sure some of our policies need to be updated on that, but again, I do thank you for wanting to serve, and you do got my support, so thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time.
Sidozmasi, Senator Gumitata, Vice Speaker and Vice Chair Ada, you're recognized at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Beneventi, for coming down here and coming up for your reappointment. Mr. Calvo, Mr. Leon Guerrero, and Attorney Fred, thank you for coming out to support him, you know, always it's not always necessary, but it's great to support a board member that's coming up for reappointment. And I've seen previous boards where it was just the appointee that came before the panel and, you know, didn't have the support of their colleagues, so it's great to see that you guys come out to support your fellow board member. I know you mentioned earlier about, you know, staying home and watching TV, and you wanted to come back and get away from that, I hope you finish the honeydew list, because you don't want that one falling behind. But other than that, I'm glad that you decided to get your reappointment and step up again and serve the community. Does your reappointment now fill the board with any, all members, or there's still lacking members within the board?
We currently have five members, but we should have seven. As Mr., our chairman stated earlier, it is difficult, we are racking our brains, you know, in fact, just before the hearing, I say, hey, I think I got a name, let's contact this person. So, but it is difficult. People understand what we do, or have an idea of what we do, and as I stated in my letter, you know, you're dealing with people's lives, and a lot of people that I worked with in the past, I approached them, I say, hey, would you like to, you know, serve, and they said, no, I don't like what you guys, I don't want to be put in a position where I decide whether this person continues to work or not. It is difficult. Plus the time. Believe me, I don't watch TV anymore, but when I do watch TV, I complain, because that's all I do, but reading and preparing for hearings, it is a challenge, you know?
Yeah, I can, I can understand. You know, looking over your packet and the annual trainings that you take with labor and contract negotiations, labor management relations, EEO, FSLA, ADAA, labor laws, and HIPAA, you know, doing that on an annual basis always keeps you updated, I guess, on what the rules and regulations and policies, and at least gives you a better hand and understanding, and I appreciate that. I have no questions of you, I look forward to moving your confirmation forward and seeing you get reconfirmed to this board, so thank you for your service to the people of Guam and to the Civil Service Commission. I truly appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
But I appreciate your wife more, because she allowed you to do it again, and...
I think she wants me out of the house.
Oh, she wants you out of... But again, thank you for your service, we truly appreciate you.
Sidozmasi, Vice Speaker Ada, Vice Chair Tony Ada. So also signing in in support was Janik Sagun, I hope I got that right, or close, Cynthia Camacho, Susan Corbin, and Michelle Galang, all in support. Just a closing comment, a couple of comments from me, Mr. Beneventi, like the vice speaker you had me at, your wife gave you permission. The second was the fact that, you know, I had a big learning curve over 23 years ago when I was first appointed to be Director of Department of Youth Affairs. Very sensitive organization in terms of the staff and, of course, the clientele that we have to work on to rehabilitate and to change the direction of their lives, and I did not know when I became the director, because in the private sector, you know how we do, you're at will, and that's the way it rolls most of the time, if not all of the time in the private sector. I met up with Mr. Calvo early in my days as a director, and I had to really, really bear down with my staff and work with others to, as you said, absolutely. Management has the awesome responsibility and the duty to be fair in their administration of, you know, employees' rights and also discipline, and it's a really, really tricky thing and difficult if you don't play by the rules and do it even-handedly, and you can find yourself in a lot of tough situations. That's why I totally agree with what you said, that you really grill management, because that's what it's about. Management in the government of Guam has a lot of tools to be able to deal with any situation with personnel at the agency level, and if they don't utilize those tools correctly, and if they don't do things like progressive discipline, within some times, there's some cases where it's just out the door, some are very cut and dry, depending if they're egregious, right? But others really mostly are, like you talked about, leave issues, other, you know, issues with regard to how employees manage their time and the like, and if a manager is doing that in a very discriminatory way, that's really grounds for a loss, really, at the Civil Service Commission. So I thank you for that, you've definitely gotten me again, I know I've voted for you before, and you certainly will have my vote, and so that, once again, Chairman Calvo, Primo, Daniel Leon Guerrero, and Mr. Nishihara, thank you once again for being here, and the committee will move quickly on your packet, and it's a little bit tight for this session maybe, but I think we'll try to get it on, if not, we'll definitely have you on in the January session. Once again, thank you, and as we said, thank you to your wife, and like you said, she wants you out of the house, so she succeeded. Looks like you'll be confirmed again, and thank you for being here this morning, and that will conclude the hearing on Mr. Beneventi for the Civil Service Commission. Have a nice day, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
So we will quickly move to the next item, we're not taking any recess, we don't need to, and so we will now move to the next item. I know there's a lot of people here and great interest in this particular bill, and so this is Bill Number 195-38COR, introduced by Vincente A. V. Borja, an act to add a new subsection 849.18 to Chapter 8, Title 1 Guam Cone, annotated relative to renaming the George Washington Football Field as the Loring Santos Cruz Football Field. And so I will, before we go to those who have come to testify this morning on this bill, I will go to ranking member, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, to introduce... I will go to ranking member Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes to introduce the bill. And I believe she also has a testimony that has been requested to be read into the record. Senator, ranking member Tina, please proceed.
Sisus Masi. Mr. Chair, thank you again for giving me the opportunity to share a statement from the author of the legislation of this bill and to note for the record that I 100% support the measure of, of, of Bill 195-38. Hafadeh and good morning. First, I want to extend my sincere apologies for not being able to attend this hearing in person today. I am deeply grateful to my esteemed colleague, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, for reading these remarks on my behalf and for her request to join as a prime co-sponsor of this measure. Thank you, Senator, for your unwavering support and for standing with our community on this important legislation. Today, we are here to discuss Bill Number 195-38, a measure to rename the George Washington High School Football Field as the Loring Santos Cruz Football Field. I want to begin by sharing that this bill was born directly from the heart of our community over the last several months. My office has received countless calls, messages, and personal requests from alumni, former players, teachers, and families, all asking for a way to honor Coach Cruz in a meaningful and lasting way. This bill is the direct result of their voices, their love, and their cherished memories. But this measure is also deeply passionate to me. Coach Cruz was my PE teacher at George Washington High School. For those who know my story, my upbringing, my upbringing was not always easy and I didn't always have the support at home that many kids are fortunate to have. I struggled and I meant. I was one of the naughty ones. I pushed boundaries and tested my teachers' patience. But Coach Cruz saw beyond my behavior. He took the time to understand me and saw the kid who needed structure, guidance, and someone to believe in him. There were days he made me walk the GW track over and over just so I could earn a passing grade in PE and stay on a path to graduation. At the time, I didn't fully grasp why he insisted. But looking back now as a father, as a coach, as a veteran and a public servant, I realize he wasn't just helping me pass the class, he was teaching me discipline, he was teaching me commitment, he was showing me that someone who cared enough not to give up on me. Coach Cruz did that for thousands of students. As reflected in this bill, he dedicated over 36 years to GW as a physical education teacher. He began coaching in 1976, serving as both an assistant and head coach for football and track. He also coached at the University of Guam and led the Pepsi Giants to championships, honored in multiple editions of the Who's Who among America's teachers. He helped shape generations of athletes, educators, service members, and community leaders. The football field at GW was more than just a field to him, it was his classroom, it was the place where he taught perseverance, teamwork, humility, and pride. It was where he turned challenges into lessons and students into leaders. Renaming the field in his honor is more than symbolic, it is a lasting recognition of a man who dedicated his life to educating, mentoring, and supporting the youth of our island. It ensures that future generations will know his name, his values, and his enduring legacy every time they step onto the field. To the Cruz family, undanklenas Sisus Masi for sharing Coach with all of us. And to everyone here today to testify, thank you for honoring his memory. Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to have these words read into the record and I look forward to hearing the testimony of those present today. And before I read the next statement, Mr. Chair, I want to note for the record that the Bureau Budget and Management Office has submitted a fiscal note, 195-38COR. And according to the comments received, GOD has noted that it will have no financial impact. However, the Bureau will anticipate that the bill may have a potential cost in the terms of new signage. So I just want to make sure that, that the committee knows that the, the fiscal report was turned in. So again, Mr. Chair, thank you. This next testimony comes from a former colleague and employee of mine that I've known for over three decades, working closely with me at the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities. And he asked me personally to read his testimony on his behalf. He does join us here this morning, but asked me if I could humbly read it into the record for him. So here goes. "Testimony of Mr. Joseph P. Branch. In support of Bill Number 195-38COR, renaming the George Washington High School Football Field as the Loring Santos Cruz Football Field. Sisus Masi, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Joseph Branch and I am here today in strong support of Bill 195-38 to rename the George Washington High School Football Field in the, in honor of my brother, Loring Santos Cruz. Loring and I both graduated from George Washington High School and this makes today especially meaningful. To speak about him is to speak not only about one of GW's most iconic coaches, but also about a man whose character shaped an entire generation of young people. Much has already been said about Loring's football legacy, the wins, the discipline, the championships, and the pride he bought, he brought to the school. But what should be remembered just as strongly is his good humor, his generosity of spirit, and his willingness to give far beyond what everyone expected of him. Loring never had children of his own, yet the measure of his life can be found in the countless young men he mentored. He had a gift for seeing potential where others saw limits and for lifting up those who needed someone to believe in them. Long after his coaching years ended, students and faculty continued to honor him because they understood the truth. Loring changed lives. This measure is not just about naming a field, it is about recognizing a man whose legacy is still alive in classrooms, hallways, and huddles across GW. A legacy carried by the students he pushed, supported, and celebrated. On behalf of my brother and our family, I respectfully ask for your support of Bill Number 195-38. Loring gave the best of himself to the students of GW and it would be a fitting tribute for the football field, a place he loved, to forever bear his name. Undanklenas Sisus Masi." Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to read that on behalf of a family member, the brother of Coach Loring Cruz, Mr. Joseph Branch is in the audience today. Sisus Masi, Tsetlu, for being here today. Sisus Masi.
Bambabetcha, Senator, ranking member Tina Rose Munya Barnes. I understand you may have a function in, in a little while, so I gave you that latitude. I know we had an order that was requested in the sign-up, so we're going to proceed with that now. Can I call on Christine Denait, Neil Agarola, Eric Ada for Governor Joe Ada? This is Thesus Ortharias Mendiola, Ryan Rios, Josef Branch, I believe we handled that one, Mario Santiago, and John Denait. So I believe we will be starting with Christine Denait first, and then there is one to be testifying last, and so we'll do that in that order. Christine Denait, please proceed.
Hafadeh, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of Bill Number 195-38, introduced by Senator Vincent A. V. Borja to rename the George Washington High School Football Field as the Loring Santos Cruz Football Field. Guahu, see Christine Cruz Denait, the youngest sibling of Loring Santos Cruz and affectionately named the Warden by Loring. He gave me this name due to my best and constant attempts to help Loring with his health challenges, with his diet, and other things that he didn't always like me reminding him about. But deep down, he appreciated and understood that I did it simply because I loved him. I want to share with you that a few days after my brother's passing, a group of his former students and athletes with whom he remained in contact initiated a petition to rename the GW Football Field in his honor. My family and I appreciate and are genuinely humbled by Loring's friends' overwhelming determination to rally the support for the naming of the GW Field in his honor. And my family stands with them, all in cementing Loring's legacy. We do, though, suggest naming the GW Field Loring Santos Cruz Field. Loring was a physical education teacher at GW for 37 years, and during that time, he interacted with over 18,000 students. Some don't know that Loring also coached track and field for many years. And of course, we all know about Loring's success in coaching high school football and the football dynasty he proudly brought to GW. When Loring attended high school at GW, he also played football and ran cross-country. Later in his life, Loring had chronic kidney disease and ended up having to go through 10 years of dialysis. The last two years of Loring's life were very challenging for him. So due to his declining health, I started to drive him to and from dialysis three times a week. It's amazing how much I was able to learn during our short five-minute drives. The brief but telling conversations were about things like what he ate, his online shopping, who he's talking to and not talking to, and of course, football. I also learned that he scheduled dialysis days based on NFL off days. And one thing that I learned that really struck me the most was that a while at GW, Loring purchased a washing machine and had it installed outside the gym. When I asked him why he did that, he said, because some players were from families that didn't have a washing machine at home and he wanted all his players to have clean uniforms, no matter who they were or where they came from. I replied, wow, that's pretty cool, but you should have turned it off on the game day so that opposing teams would get irritated by the dirty uniforms. We both laughed. That washing machine is just one example of many, many things he did for others. He used his own money to purchase paint to line the field because the paint he got from the school wasn't the right paint. Loring looked out for students who had difficulty standing up for themselves and were bullied. And he provided students a safe place in his office. He also purchased equipment and uniforms for players that didn't have the means to do so. There are a lot more stories and things that were not noticed by many people but remain for a lifetime with many people who he helped along the way. There were so many. I'm very proud of my brother Loring and thank those that were inspired to honor him in his element, the GW Field, which was his home for so many years. Thank you for hearing me out, and I ask for your support. Biba, Loring Santos Cruz Field, respectfully, Christine Cruz Denait. Thank you.
And a big Biba to you too and your family and everyone that's here. Before I move on, I'd like to also welcome Senator Terahy and Senator Parkinson for joining us today at this hearing. So next, we will go move on to Mr. Neil. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Honorable Senator Chris Dwejes. Thank you for having me here today, Bunson Hafadeh. I also like to acknowledge ranking member Senator Tina Munya Barnes, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, and the rest of the committee. Senator Gumatautau, Senator Luhon, Senator Parkinson, Senator Terahy, Senator Barnett, and Senator Tykeby. Good morning.
Good morning.
To switch glasses? My name is Neil Agarola. I'm a 30-year employee of the Guam Department of Education, a 22-year member of the Alaska National Guard, a graduate of George Washington High School, class of '88, a 1987-88 interscholastic football champion, a 1989-90 Adult Football League champion under House Angels Football Team and the University of Guam, a 20-year high school football coach, and a lifelong supporter of Guam athletics. I am honored to submit this statement in strong support of Bill 195-38, the renaming of GW Football Field to the Loring Santos Cruz Field, because Coach Cruz was in large part responsible for making me the person that I am today. Coach Cruz dedicated decades of coaching high school football to mentor young athletes, instilling discipline and fostering a work ethic that extended far beyond the game. In addition, Coach Cruz served more than 35 years as a PE teacher at George Washington High School. Under his leadership and tenure, the field became a place where families gathered, friendship were forged, and values of respect and perseverance were passed down to hundreds of GW football players. His commitment was not measured in wins alone, but in the countless lives he shaped through encouragement, guidance, and example. Like myself, many have become productive members of our community and dozens have become notable coaches within the Interscholastic Football League, the Interscholastic Sports Association, the Guam Youth Football League, and the Adult Football League. Renaming the football field will preserve the memory of Coach Cruz and his contributions to Guam, to the Guam youth, inspire future generations of GW football players to carry forward values of teamwork, resilience, culture, and pride, and strengthen our community identity by ensuring the field reflects the people who it shaped. I respectfully urge the committee to approve this renaming. Thank you for your consideration and for your commitment to preserving the spirit of our community. God bless.
Sisus Masi, Neil.
Thanks, sir.
I appreciate your testimony. And now we'll go to Eric Ada on behalf of his dad, Governor Joseph F. Ada. Eric, please proceed.
Thank you. This is a testimony of my father, Joseph F. Ada, in support of Bill Number 195-38. Hafadeh, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in strong support of Bill Number 195-38, introduced by Senator Vincent A. V. Borja, to rename the George Washington High School Football Field as the Loring Santos Cruz Field. For 37 years, Coach Loring Santos Cruz gave his life to the young men and women of George Washington High School. He was more than a physical education teacher and coach, he was a builder of character, a steady presence in uncertain times, and a man who believed that every student who stepped in his class had greatness inside of them waiting to be called forth. The lessons Coach Cruz taught reached far beyond Friday night games. He taught young people how to stand back up after being knocked down. He taught them that discipline isn't punishment, it's the pathway to becoming... that discipline isn't punishment. It's the pathway to becoming someone you can be proud of. He taught them that a team is a family, and that you show up for a family even when it's hard. These weren't lessons from a playbook. They were lessons from his life, and they shaped not just athletes, but the fathers, mothers, teachers, business owners, and community leaders of our island, which depends on today. Yes, Coach Cruz led championship teams in both the Interscholastic Football League and the Miller Football League. Yes, he served as defensive coach for University of Guam Tritons and guided the Pepsi Giants as head coach. Yes, he was recognized multiple times in Who's Who among America's teachers, an honor reserved for educators whose impact reaches far beyond their own classrooms. But if you ask the men he coached and the students he taught, they won't first tell you about the championships. They'll tell you about the washing machine he quietly installed at school so players from struggling families could wash their uniforms, because he understood that dignity mattered. They'll tell you how his office became a refuge, a safe place where students could escape trouble, find peace, and know they mattered. They'll tell you he had a gift for seeing the underdog, the kid everyone else had written off and refusing to give up on them. They'll tell you he showed up every single day, not because it was required, but because he believed in the power of mentorship and the responsibility we have to guide our youth, especially those who need it most. Coach Cruz never married. He had no children of his own, but he fathered thousands. His players were his sons. His students were the young people he poured himself into day after day. His nieces and nephews were his family, loved with the same fierce devotion he gave everyone in his care. The George Washington High School field, football field, was his home, and everyone who stepped onto it became part of something bigger than themselves. That field was Coach Cruz's true classroom. It was where he built pride, pride in Manila, pride in being a Gecko, pride in being from Guam. It was sacred ground to him, and he made it sacred to everyone who played there. Renaming this field in his honor is more than recognition. It is a declaration of what we value as a people: service that asks for nothing in return, dedication that spans decades, and the quiet heroism of educators who pour themselves into our children so that Guam's future will be stronger than its past. We often name facilities after elected officials, military heroes, and civic pioneers. It is equally fitting, perhaps more so, that we honor the teachers and coaches who shaped the very leaders we later commemorate. Coach Cruz built the foundation. This is simply us saying thank you. As a former governor, I have had the privilege of recognizing many who served Guam with distinction. As Coach Cruz's family, I had the deeper privilege of knowing this man behind the legacy. He was humble. He was faithful. He devoted himself entirely to his students, his players, and his family with a selflessness that defined his life. He had, he had a particular gift for reaching the students others overlooked, the ones who needed someone to believe in them most. He represented the best of our island, an unshakable belief in our young people, pride in our schools, and love for this community that raised us all. Bill Number 195-38 follows the established process under Title I, Chapter 8 of the Guam Code annotated for naming public facilities and carries no fiscal impact beyond new signage, but its value cannot be measured in dollars. It is measured in the hearts of the thousands who called him Coach, and in the generations of students who will one day ask, who was Loring Santos Cruz? And hear a story that makes them want to be better. I urge this committee and follow my fellow Guamanians to support this measure wholeheartedly. Let us enshrine Coach Cruz's legacy of mentorship, discipline, and unwavering commitment to our youth for generations to come. Let his name on that field remind every young person who steps onto it that someone believed in them, and that Guam honors those who give everything to the next generation. Sisus Maasi, for your time and consideration, respectfully submitted, Governor Joseph F. Ada, former governor of Guam.
Sisus Maasi, Eric Ada, on behalf of your father and Governor Joseph F. Ada, and I'm sure that you embody every single one of those words as well, and you read it well. Thank you, Eric. Mr. Meniola, please proceed with your testimony.
Hafde, good morning. I'm Hafde, Chairman and distinguished senators. Thank you so much for your time and allowing us to speak here today. My name is Thesius Meniola. I'm here to support Bill Number 195-38. I would like to thank Senator Vis Borja for introducing this bill, and I would like to thank the numerous alumni, students, and athletes that petitioned that the GW field be renamed in the late Loring Santos Cruz's name. I come to you not only as a nephew of Coach Cruz, but as a student that had witnessed his dedication and tough-love teaching in the '90s. As many here may attest and contribute of their memory of him, unlike, unlike many teachers in his field, he knew how to connect with students, challenge them, and most importantly, bring out the best in them. Guam got a taste of that in the '80s with iconic Purple Rain he ushered in with high school football. His legacy will continue on by the thousands of young men and women's lives he has touched and the pride he instilled amongst those honored to have known him and have attended GW during his tenure. Loring Cruz didn't just teach football. He poured his entire body and soul into that sport and into that field. I could recall so many times sitting in my grandmother's home, watching my uncle watching college and national football games for hours, even recording games on VHS just to analyze plays. Even when he was in his room, it sounded like a stadium in there with the commentator, commentators calling out the game, the crowd roaring in the background. He loved the game, and he loved teaching it to young, impressionable, and starving young minds, many, many of whom used it as an outlet to stay out of trouble and also used it as a guide for discipline which would shape them into great and achieving individuals later in life. Loring Cruz was not just a coach. He was an inspiration for many generations then and now, an icon on and off the field, a force to be reckoned with, and a name synonymous with the game of football here on this island. Now we have a great opportunity before us to forever remember and emblazon his name on that field forever, a field he called home. With that being said, let's bring his spirit to its rightful resting place and pass this bill. Thank you, Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, Thesius, I appreciate, we appreciate your testimony, and we will continue on now with the next in line, and that is Janey Perez. Please proceed.
Hafde, senators. My name is Janey Perez, class of '98. Go Geckos. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of Bill 195-38. I am here today to express my strong support for renaming George Washington High School football field in honor of Coach Loring Santos Cruz, a man whose influence on our youth, our schools, and our island has been nothing short of extraordinary. Coach Cruz dedicated decades of his life in shaping the young athletes, not just into better players, but into better people. For him, football was just never a sport. It was a classroom without walls. He taught discipline, integrity, teamwork, and resilience. He believed in every student who stepped onto that field, even when they didn't believe in themselves. He also did the same for racquetball and track and just coming into his class. He just had to do all of that stuff. Coach Cruz also represented the best of what we had to hope for, for our educators. He showed up early, stayed late, and invested his time, his heart, and energy into Guam's future, Guam's youth. His coaching career had produced championship teams, but more importantly, it produced generations of adults who continue to carry these lessons into their families, their workplace, and service to our island. Renaming the field that he walked on, taught on, and poured his life into is a fitting tribute to a man who gave so much to the George Washington High School and the Guam football community. It ensures that future students will know his name, hear his story, and understand that excellence and character are built through dedication and service. Coach Loring Cruz is deserving of this honor, not because of a single accomplishment, but because of a lifetime of commitment to Guam's youth. His legacy lives in thousands of Geckos whose lives he touched. Naming the football field after him is a meaningful way to preserve that legacy and give to our students a lasting reminder of what true leadership looks like. Coach Cruz has earned this recognition, recognition through a lifetime of dedication to our island's young people, and I respectfully ask for support on the passing of Bill 195-38. Thank you. Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, Janey, and we appreciate your testimony and you being here today. Now we have a legend to honor a legend. I will now recognize that Mr. Ryan Rios. Please proceed.
Sorry, I don't have anything prepared. I didn't know I was going to speak. But as far as the legacy and of course, the foundation that Mr. Ada has said about Coach Cruz is very true. Through the years, you know, my eight championships is all through his coaching. I mimic everything that he did when we were growing up as kids. And as far as the other schools, from Father Duñez, Coach Prasadas, and Coach Guerrero, Coach Duñez, and from Sanchez winning their championships with Coach Agarola, and from Southern being coached from the '89 class, I mean, that's, that's, that's a monument for what he, what he has done for football here on this island. Everybody goes through the system which Coach Cruz has put, put together for us to learn and for other children to learn, not only for GW, but the whole entire, the whole entire high school teams. And naming the field is just, it's just like school spirit, showing up to that field, walking on that field, and understanding the people that put things together and what Coach Cruz has put together as, as players and as teammates. You can't ask for anything more. And he represents the field and the spirit of the school. Thank you.
Sisus Maasi, Ryan Rios, Chairman and the Board. Appreciate you. Next, that's a, that's a notation from his players that gave him that, that, that title. So next, we'll go with Zoef Branch. Okay, and that was, that's, as I mentioned, that was read into the testimony. And so thank you very much again. So now Mario Santiago.
Good morning. Bunson Hafde, Mr. Chair and fellow senators. My name is Mario Santiago. I am a class of 1995 GW graduate. I am part of the last, I'm one of the members of the last teams that Coach Loring Cruz had coached during his time at GW. I am in here to, to request your support, as I am in 100% support of the bill to rename the football field to Coach Loring Santos Cruz football field. Just like Coach Ryan, I came here unprepared with anything written or documented, but I want to say that Coach Loring Cruz wholeheartedly deserves this notoriety, and I request all your support for it. Coach Cruz was the standard of football on Guam, high school football on Guam. He was the epitome, in my opinion, and I'm also, I can guarantee with the rest of his alumni, he was the epitome of high school football. He coached winners. He coached the students that became also coaches, the alumnis, and his program still lives through this day. Not only that, Coach Cruz was a great teacher, great leader. He, he, you know, he was loyal to the school, loyal for ev, for, for his team. He was a team-first coach. And I'm requesting your support that, that we try to give him this honor based on his achievements as a teacher and as a coach with his dynasties. Thank you.
Sisus Maasi, Mario, and your mere presence and coming up to testify along with Ryan, I know is much appreciated, and thank you for being here and, and expressing your remarks. And so last on the list, we have John Denait to come forward and provide his testimony.
My name is Jonathan M. Denait, and I'm here in support of Bill 195-38. Hafde, Mr. Chairman, and all the committee members that are here today. Thank you for being here, and thank you to everybody, the people that are here participating in the legislative process, okay? Loring Santos Cruz was my brother-in-law, and I'm proud of mine now because Loring was a good man who did so much for so many people, but never really spoke about it that much. I always appreciated and respected that about Loring. It wasn't about him. Loring lived a life of service as a teacher and a coach, and there are many people that Loring helped or kept in touch with through sports and just through friendships. Loring would also reach out and offer support to those that sometimes other might not, others might not offer support to. And also, he simply just helped people that he wanted to help, and there were a lot of people. Loring's leadership style was that as head coach, he was in charge of the team, and that included the players and his assistant coaches. And whatever might happen regarding his team, no matter what, he would always step and take responsibility for his team's actions. That was his character. He also treated players respectfully and equally, and would not allow, an example would be, he wouldn't allow a player to start a game if they had missed the previous practice, no matter which player they were. Loring's football instincts, his strategy, his playmaking, game prep, scouting, were all top level. He was a great coach. We all know that. But as many have said, sports was not the endgame or the final goal for Loring. Sports was a means for him to help people through coaching and through the friendships that resulted from that coaching. Plus, outside of sports, he had friends that he also kept in contact with. He kept in contact with a lot of friends. But I must also admit that Loring sometimes could keep a grudge going. So there were also friends that he sometimes didn't always keep in touch with, but he treasured all his friends. I also figured that Loring's coaching career was started and shaped from the fact that he came from a big family. Early on, he learned that discipline was the key to getting to the goal line, and he was often the guy offering his siblings ways to keep their eye on the ball, whether, whether solicited or not. Loring was attentive to his mother Florence, making sure that she was always fine and taken care of, along with his other siblings' help and support. Later in life, with lots of nephews and nieces, Loring was a good and generous uncle with his time and his help. Coach Cruz was a dynasty builder. Many of us know about Loring's lifetime of service at GW and the success and respect that he brought to GW through his winning ways and his football championships, which are legendary. And those record-breaking accomplishments at GW are reason enough to warrant naming the GW field after Loring, as GW field was his second home for many years. But as I and others here have mentioned, there was so much more to Loring than his sports. I cannot think of any other person that is a GW alumni, coach, and teacher that is so singularly destined to be the namesake of GW field, as is Loring Santos Cruz. And it would be a great and fitting honor to Coach Cruz and his family that the field be named Loring Santos Cruz Field. Thank you very much for your time, and we hope for your support.
Thank you. Sisus Maasi, John Denight, and I know we had the request of the first and the last, but I got one more to read into the record, and it's a Denight family member, so I'm sure it will be accepted that it's the last one to be read into the record before we go to the panel for questions. And this is from Mana.
Hafay, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, my name is Mana, and I'm writing in support of Bill 195-38COR to rename the George Washington High School football field after Coach Loring Santos Cruz. I'm not writing to tell you about championships, I'm writing to tell you about what he meant to those of us who were lucky enough to experience Coach Cruz, well, Uncle Loring. My uncle never married, he never had children of his own, but he raised us. His nieces and nephews were like his, and somehow, he still had enough left to show up for thousands of kids who needed him just as much as we did. When I think about Uncle Loring, I think about how he made you feel, not just noticed, seen. He had a way of looking at a kid, especially the ones everyone else had written off, and making them believe they mattered, that they could be more than their circumstances, that someone was in their corner. That field was his home. It was where he poured everything he had into building young men who would become good fathers, good citizens, good people. It is where he taught us, family isn't just blood, it is who shows up for you. And my uncle always showed up. My uncle taught me that you show up even when it's hard, that you fight for the underdog, that you give everything you've got without exception, receiving or receiving anything in return. He lived that way for thirty-seven years as an educator and every day of his life as a man. The field was his life's work, but his impact reached far beyond football. He taught thousands of students across every sport and every walk of life. He was my second father, and he was a father to this island's youth. I ask this committee to name the Loring Santos Cruz Field so that each athlete, every student who steps onto it, knows that the name of the man who spent thirty-seven years believing in our kids were worth everything he had to give. Sisus Maasi, this is the testimony of Mana Denight.
So at this time, I'd like to recognize my colleagues who have come this morning to probably make comments or ask questions of any of the panel members, those that are here, if they ask you to return to the table, please do so. And so we will start with Senator Titegui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Viva GW, class of nineteen forgotten. I'm not going to reveal my age. No, I'm a proud nineteen seventy-eight grad of GW High School, you know, and I didn't know Loring very well. I think he had a good laugh when, in nineteen seventy-seven, when I went out for the boys' football team, and because they didn't have any girls' flag football. So I had Tony Posadas help me go on the field, ready to, you know, go out for tryouts for the boys' football team, and they were trying every possible way to make sure that I did not get on. The coaches were asking me, oh, please, tell them we don't have uniforms for women, we can't do this. I said, but this is unfair. You have boys' football. What about the girls' football? Unless you guys put a girls' football team together, flag football team, then I'm gonna go out and try out for football. So lo and behold, of course, the administration got involved, and they created a women's football league at GW Flag Football. So I know Loring, excuse me, has heard the story about that through Tony Posadas, who they were very good friends. But you know, I really wish he was here today to hear all the comments. I think he is, he's listening from above. You know, the comments that you had to say, it would have been really nice to have this done while he was still around, alive. But I think this bill will go through. I got a lot of people who called my office, and you know what was ironic is, it wasn't just my GW alumni or people from GW who graduated, there were actually people who graduated from FD, who graduated from JFK, who asked me to support this, and so I had to ask them, you know, why? You're not even from GW. And they said, because Loring not only gave loyalty to his players at GW and his students at GW, he showed respect whenever there was a game on any other school that came in front of GW to play. He made sure that people had that respect for each other, for the game. And that really had me right there at, yeah, I believe this man deserves this. So thank you, everyone, for coming and sharing his story, so that those who are listening today can see how truly amazing this man was and how he truly cared. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Maasi, Senator Titegui. Senator Lujan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, panel, for being here this morning as well. You know how fitting that today we're here, listening to, of course, testimony on renaming GW Field after Loring Santos Cruz. Just a couple of weeks ago, GW also took the championship. So I'm sure he's still working his magic, you know? So while he's resting in glory, he's, I'm sure, still coaching. But again, thank you for coming out and testifying, and congratulations to GW and your championship as well. You know, this bill, of course, honors a legendary coach, physical education teacher, and mentor by renaming, of course, the GW Field, the Loring Santos Cruz Field in his memory. Of course, his dedication and passion and commitment to sports and physical education have inspired countless athletes and students and shaped many lives, as we heard earlier, of course, testimony read by Senator Barnes of Senator Borja, whose life was inspired by Coach Cruz. This field, of course, will stand as a testament of Coach Cruz's enduring legacy, where, of course, future generations will learn and grow and compete with integrity. So with that being said, Coach Cruz's impact will be felt for years. So with that, condolences to the family. Coach Cruz rests in heavenly glory, and again, continue washing over the GW athletes and field, because that field will be named the Loring Santos Cruz Field. Thank you for testifying this morning. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Maasi, Senator Lujan. At this time, I will recognize Senator Barnett.
Sisus Maasi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak and the strongest support possible for the bill. Of course, I want to thank Coach Cruz's family for coming out to testify, and also, I just want to officially congratulate Coach Ryan Rios on winning the George Washington, or winning the championship for the geckos this year. This is your eighth title as the gecko's coach, and you know, with the untimely passing of Coach Cruz, for you guys to be able to snap the streak of Father Duñez and bring home the trophy, I mean, the timing of it, it's really just legendary, and so, obviously, a very strong support of the bill. I attended George Washington High School, and my mother's brother played for the tradesman, and so we used to, showing my age there, but we used to go and watch Coach Loring and the geckos whenever we had the chance. And you know, Coach Loring, you know, and this is in line with your testimony, Coach, Mr. Chair, don't want to confuse anybody up here, but it's in line with your testimony that Loring really took high school football coaching to almost like an NFL-like level. I mean, I know that he was very proud of scouting the teams, watching the tape, and really doing everything he could before, during, and even after the games to keep the geckos in the win column. And so, obviously, I think this is a great step to honor the legacy of Coach Cruz, and I'm in very strong support of the bill. And Viva geckos. I want to thank Mr. Chair and, of course, all of you for your testimony and support of Coach Cruz, who was, obviously, if there's a football Mount Rushmore of Guam football, Coach Loring is definitely going to be one of the faces up there. And so I also want to just commend the author for the timely introduction of the bill, and I'm eager to vote in support of it. Sisus Maasi, Mr. Chair. And Viva geckos. Viva Coach Cruz.
Viva. Sisus Maasi, Senator Barnett. Senator Gumitata, you recognized?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the panel for being with us this morning, and I absolutely am in favor of this bill. I had the privilege to be able to be fieldside from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand two on many, many occasions. My former boss is sitting right there, and I can recall all the days that he would say, hey, how did that game go last night? Not just him, but the other part of that group that was kind of kicking me in the you-know-where when I first started at KAM. But it was an absolute privilege to be there at the sidelines to watch him. He is probably, in my opinion, one of the most unassuming persons you'd ever meet. And it goes back to Janey's testimony earlier, that he showed up. So he would be in all these different places. He would be at the gym, I'm like, what are you doing here? There's no reason for you to be here. And he's selling tickets. Or I'd see him at, and the unknown factoid that he was a track and field coach, because I'm, you know, I had no other, no other choice, thanks, John, to do other sports, but I did go out and I got to witness not just his being there on the field with Ryan and others, but it was really seeing him show up for every GW event, whether it was a sporting event, whether it was a graduation, whether it was just them having their spirit week. I would run into him at the office when he was there, walking around, he would always be there in support of not just his athletes, but just the students in general. And so I say that, hey, he's given so much. There are, I think this might be one of the first facilities or sports facilities that would bear a name, and no better name to be honored than Coach Loring, and very excited about this opportunity. I only have one question, and I'm only asking because John's here, Eric's here, and I know that the three of you will probably harass those two for this, but recognizing the bill's intent to honor the life and service of Coach Cruz by designating the field in his name, and I do agree with it, because he was so, not just football, it was everything else, Christine, to calling it the Loring Cruz Field. What information is available regarding any immediate or long-term plans that might be at the table at this point, either through your friends at GDOE, your friends at George Washington, or maybe others, that use the field regularly to improve it? And what, how can today's discussion ensure that repairs, replacement plans at that important facility be adjusted in the event that this bill becomes law, and what could be the outlook for the field?
Thank you, Senator, for that question. You know, Loring's passing was just a couple of months ago, so we're still kind, we're still in grieving mode, but when I heard about what his players and friends wanted to do, I was kind of, I was just filled with a lot of different emotions, but by doing this, my sister and I, out of the nine, there are only four of us left, I'm the youngest, and we had talked about actually putting together a foundation to honor him, and look at, if this thing did happen, I just felt that we would have to be the caretakers of the field. And whether it was with government support or not, probably not. If it was something that we needed to go out on our own and try to figure out what to do, I did see, because I was watching the games the past few weeks, and we're kind of disappointed that, I mean, I was glad that it was brought, I mean, it was aired, but just the angles of how to watch the game, I was like, what happened to the press box? There were just so many things that I started to think about, and I said, well, you know what? If it becomes, if Loring's name does, this thing does go through, we feel that we need to be the caretakers of it. And if we're not around, then we have hundreds of other nephews and nieces that would step up. So what it does is, it just makes me more want to take care of the field and put in a press box, putting a concession stand so that the associations at the schools can make money. There are just improvements that can happen, and I just feel compelled that we would need to be the caretakers of the field, and if we did it privately on our own, then that's what we would want to do. I don't know if that, I've just been thinking about it.
Oh, no, Christine, oh, no, it's, it's, it does answer that question for me, because I would say that my office, I got to hear from a lot of his former players too, and they were asking me, obviously, to support the bill, and I said, of course. I think that this effort is, it should just, it just should not be a naming, taking it the next step. I think that recently, when they put in the track, and I still have one kid left playing interscholastic sports, so being able to go to GW and see the track there, it was pretty amazing. But there's so many organizations that use that field, and I think moving down the road, that's where it brings the charm to it. It's the home field for the geckos. It makes it very tough to go and play there if you're not from GW, but it also has such other charm. You can't go on certain corners of that field, you might fall in a hole, or you might, you might play, but you know that there's someone, like a Loring might have just tripped them on the twenty-yard line or something from above. But the idea is, that creates such a great atmosphere, not just for sports, but for the school. And again, I just, I'm here in support, and I hope that you guys would be inspired to take that next step. And I know, looking at John too, I think that, and with your help, I think he's probably going to volunteer, but I hope that this is something that could come into fruition.
And then also, there's no scoreboard, so we didn't know what the time was when the game was happening.
Well, maybe, because without the press box, and tell Coach, you guys got to get rid of all those canopies on the side of the field, because people can't even see anymore, but it'd make those games even better. But yes, I'm with you.
But really, I just, I feel like we would need to be the caretakers if it bore my brother's name, and if that meant we had to go in and paint, or we had to raise money to put in a scoreboard and make improvements, then that's what we would want to do.
All right.
So that his legacy continues.
Yeah, thank you for that.
And if I may add, Senator.
Senator, Senator, I would like to thank you for all your hard work on the sidelines back in the days.
Oh, man, thank you for finally publicly saying it, John.
But just, just to follow up on Christine, yeah, we talked about this, and look, if the name should, if Loring should be the namesake of the field, then yeah, we would definitely, you know, go up there, do an assessment, and we would hope between, you know, some government support, and also, we would reach out to the private sector, you know, get the field to where it should be. Like Christine mentioned, there's no press box, there's no scoreboard, it's a field right now, pretty much. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John.
The other thing I want to add, Senators, is that aside from GW using the football field, it's been used by, several decades, by other teams.
Nineteen ninety-nine South Pacific Games, it was the.
The Father Duñez Memorial School has used this, their home field, for the past twenty-plus years, I think, right? And, and like Christine said, we don't have the luxury of having a scoreboard, something as menial as a scoreboard, you know, should be up there. But I think with, you know, with your approval, this might be the start of something great for GW, you know? We'll start here, and then we'll eventually build a lasting legacy for your brother Loring, Coach Cruz, and continue the impact that he's provided for the youth of Guam.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, for this, I appreciate you.
Sisus Maasi, Senator Gumitata. Vice Speaker, Vice Chair, Tony Adda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, you know, I support the measure to renaming of the field, and I think it's just for clarification because of the title of the bill, right? It's the Loring Cruz Football Field, so, and that's a multipurpose field, am I correct? Yeah, so, and that's why you were mentioning the Loring Santos Cruz Field?
Yeah, instead of football field, that it would be filled because it would be used for, you know, a lot of different things, like track and field, yeah.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, and just in that, right, there were the, during the committee markup, just to. markup, just to perhaps delete football, and then also on page two and section two, deleting the word football. That way it just makes it the Loring Santos Cruz Field. Yeah, I'm in support of this measure and I look forward for it to go into the floor. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sidoos Massey, Vice Chair, and Vice Speaker Ada, and certainly we will make that correction during the markup of the bill. So moving along, now Senator Trelawney, you recognize?
Sidoos Massey, Mr. Chair, thank you all for your testimony today. I really appreciate you all coming here. And someone mentioned a petition. I haven't seen it, so if we could get a copy, I'd like to make sure that's added to the record. And our records here are supposed to be permanent, so that will be, anyone in the future from GW want to research what, why it was named that way, they will be able to also see that. And I appreciate the testimony regarding, you know, his professionalism and also the values that he held himself and also was able to teach the many, many students that he worked with. And I very much appreciate that. And I'm hoping with all of our efforts and those of GW's continuing, that we, we can make sure to teach the future generations of students that we can connect that, right? That when they, I've seen it a lot with the schools that are renamed after people, and they're not really sure why. Sometimes the principals don't have that history because they didn't live at that time. And I just want to make sure, if you guys can help us, to make sure that this is connected, that we have like written history, records, pictures, so that future generations at the school, and if we can put it into our committee report, that will be here at the legislature, so that they will always be able to have a place to research and connect, especially the values. I really do appreciate that, Coach Rios, when you said that the football system on Guam or the generations of athletes and the generations of improved football, that this is all comes from a dedication to learning and improvement and being generous and spreading this knowledge throughout the island. I do recognize that this field is, it has been the home and the host for so many in our community, different events, even since my daughters were there at GW. You know, they tried to improve the track at that time, but not the field particularly. And, and yeah, so all these efforts over the years, it's not been always completely whole. It's a big campus, but one of our older ones, but one of maybe our most number of graduates because it was our only school for a while. And we all have pride in that, and we want to make sure to, it's not a burden on the family, that's not what this should be. It is a pride for our entire island, and we want to just ensure that these are the values that we put down in writing for future generations to embrace, to remember. And everyone who comes to that field knows that these are the values, this is the kind of sportsmanship we want. And so, very happy, and I know he's very loved, in addition to all that he's done. He was a very loved man, and so that just really speaks volumes. And that we can have people from all walks of life in support of this is really very telling. So I want to thank all of you for your individual efforts and work and carrying on those values as well. Coach, I want to congratulate you and GW, I thought that was just phenomenal. And I, I am just so happy for GW and very, very proud. And of course, football across the island makes us all, that was like one of the funnest things to be part of, right, throughout the island? It's just, it's just island pride, yeah. Yes, watching from everywhere we can, just to see, you know, schools that have challenges really overcome those and excel. It's awesome, and that's thanks to all of you. And of course, to Coach Cruz, Sidoos Massey, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Trelawney, and so what Senator Trelawney brought up, I want to let you know that I am the Vice Chair of the Rules Committee and the Legislative Operations, but I'm going to ask the Chairman, you know, Senator Ada, as Senator Trelawney mentioned, please feel free, and we'll be preparing for the January session for this bill, to bring in any photos, any stand-up boards and others, we can put them in the foyer here, and also can put some on the floor when we're hearing the bill, in order to commemorate what Senator Trelawney's mentioned in his honor. So I'm sure that request will be granted, and so feel free to bring in any material, stand-up boards, pictures, historical information in the January session. We'll notify you when the bill's about to be heard in that session, and you'll be welcome to do that, to solidify and bring more importance to why this is a very fitting tribute. Senator Parkinson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I rise in strong support of this bill. I am a former player of Coach Loring Cruz. I played under Coach Farron and Coach Rios and Coach Cruz in 2002 to 2004. Coach Farron handled the offense, Coach Rios did the amazing defense, and on Fridays, Coach Cruz would come and give his wisdom on our special teams. And I remember how I got into GW football was because of Coach Cruz. I had never played football on Guam, I had actually played one season of football in the States, and I played for a team that lost every game we played. And so really turned me off to the whole experience, but I met Coach Cruz during PE of my sophomore year, and he said to me, it's like, "Oh, man, the team would love to have you, you should come out and try out and play next year because you've got some talent, kid." And I thought that was so kind of him to say. Because, you know, when you've been getting your butt whooped for an entire season, it's hard to find love for a sport, and he helped me find it. And I tried out my junior year, and I made the football team. But even then, you know, there were trials and tribulations that come with all high school sports, and I, at the time, had earned a starting position from somebody who had already been there. And I remember, you know, that person was a very friendly and popular person, so I dealt with my fair share of hazing. And there was a point where I almost quit on the team. And it was actually Coach Cruz that made me feel welcome and part of the team. At the time, I recognized that I had talent as an athlete, but I had chased individual excellence. Because, you know, when you're on a losing team, that's the best you could hope for. But I was in an opportunity with a real team that had real championship aspirations, and he taught me to be humble. Taught me to be humble. To play for more than myself, for play, to play for my team, to play for the person next to me. And so I stuck it out. And those, some of those guys that gave me a hard time came some of my best friends. We didn't win a championship my junior year, but we stuck it out. And me and those guys that became my brothers on the field, these coaches, that became like a father to me, we won it my senior year, start of a new dynasty. And to think like I would have lost out on that experience if it wasn't for Coach Cruz actually caring, not giving up on any of his students. And I'm just one story in an ocean of stories that Coach Cruz has contributed to. And so it is entirely worthy that this field should be named after him. That the history and the legacy and the values of what he taught should be memorialized so that people, when they ask, "Why is this field named this field?", they know. They know why we call it after him, what he stood for, what he did for this island, for the generations of men he shaped. Truly what a beautiful life he lived to influence so many people while doing something that he truly, truly loved every day. It's truly a beautiful life and should be celebrated. Should be celebrated that you could do so much by building community exactly where you are. You don't need to go anywhere to change the world, you could change the world right at home. So thank you, Coach Cruz, and thank you all to everyone who testified today. I support this legislation, thank you.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Parkinson, I just have a couple of closing comments, and once again, to thank everyone for being here today. You know, it's interesting because I was going over with my staff, I have a couple of days on the calendar this year, or this month, to hear bills. And so this discussion about how much Loring's been influencing things, to include possibly the championship, was to hear this bill today when the NFL is playing Guam time on Monday, a bunch of games that I'm sure he's watching. I chose this day, and to hear your testimony, his sister saying that, you know, he would make sure that the dialysis appointments were scheduled, not on the days that the NFL was playing. So, Coach Loring, you got your way again today. So anyways, one other thing is that, you know, the two things that stood out to me when this bill was introduced was, first of all, the overwhelming amount of support and, you know, requests that came in to my committee. The second is, is that, you know, the people that are requesting this, it's amazing on how the ask for this to come forward and for it to pass, it's really out of gratitude, you know, and it tells you what the man was. You know, the fact is, is that humility, gratitude is something that are attributes that are very, very distinguishable, right? And so, you know, I've just been amazed at all of the, I mean, I put bills on for hearing and, and, you know, it's okay, the bill's going to be heard. So many people, just for the bill going on, were texting me and emailing me, "Hey, thanks for putting the bill on." And it's our job, right? But just for the bill going on, it just tells you how many people exude the example that Coach Loring Cruz put forward, and not just on the field, but off the field. I also, one thing that I always derive my vision from about people is how other people talk about those individuals. And one of them was, is my brother Kevin. Kevin Duñez, you know, was a fierce competitor also. I didn't watch much high school football here because I was actually stateside for most of my high school years. But my brother Kevin played in the MFL, and he would always note when he was going to play Loring Cruz's team. Because I was a big Miller Bears fan, and he would say, "Man, we're playing Loring this weekend." And I said, "Well, what's up?" He goes, "Well, it's going to be a tough game." But he goes, "You know that guy? I not only revere him as a coach, but I revere him as a person." So when other people speak that way about you, from, you know, the bottom of their heart, and also fierce competitors speak that way about you, you know that, you know, you've made an impact. And so for that reason and many other reasons, that is why I also will be making sure that this committee report moves forward quickly. I anticipate it in the January session, was a great way to start out a new year. And, and you can be assured that it will, committee report will be completed, amendments, as the Vice Speaker said, will be put forward. And I believe that this honor will be bestowed, in my humble opinion, with unanimous support. So like I said, we'll keep you abreast of when it will be held in the, in the January session, for any of you who want to come down, you know, and maybe just view the session live if you want. Like I said, please feel free to bring any memorabilia and others to really, you know, exhort our colleagues to do the right thing and pass this bill. So with that, folks, thank you for coming forward. One of the most enjoyable bills that I've ever had to hear in my history of being a legislator. And so that will conclude the testimony on Bill 195-38. And so we'll move on with the last item of business today. Thank you for being here, folks, and God bless you. I enjoy this beautiful Monday and maybe catch the Sunday night game in his honor. It should be starting about maybe 12:30 or 1:00. It just started, okay. Coach Loring's watching, so go watch with him. Sidoos Massey. Having concluded that portion of the business, the last item on the agenda today will be the hearing on Bill Number 208-38. The author once again, Senator Telo Tydegui, An Act to Amend Public Law 37-135 to Provide a One-Time $200 Supplemental Cost of Living Allowance, COLA, to Eligible Retirees and Survivors Who Last Rendered Government Service with Autonomous Agencies and Public Corporations. Senator Trelawney. We can take a short, Tydegui, we can take a short recess.
It's okay, Mr. Chair, if we can, just keep moving forward.
Okay, Senator Tydegui, you recognize?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to hear Bill, for hearing Bill 208-38. Mr. Chair, when Public Law 37-135 was enacted last year, it appropriated approximately 1.5 million in excess revenue to provide a one-time $200 COLA payment to eligible government of Guam employees. Unfortunately, the law's language unintentionally excluded retirees from our autonomous agencies and public corporations such as GPA, GWA, the Guam Port Authority, AGIDA, and the Guam Housing Corporation, the Guam Visitors Bureau, the Guam Airport Authority, and the Government of Guam Retirement Fund. Bill 208-3 simply corrects this oversight. It authorizes the Department of Administration to coordinate with autonomous agencies and public corporations to ensure that no retiree is left behind in receiving the same one-time payment that their counterparts have already received. Payments will be made no later than December 31st, 2025, and will cover retirees as of September 30th, 2024. However, before introducing this bill, I did reach out to the Director of Department of Administration to review, to review my draft legislation to ensure that the language was correct and authorizes him to make these payments. With this concurrence, I then introduced Bill 208-38. It is also important to clarify that this measure does not create a new appropriation. No additional government spending is being authorized. Bill 208-38 only clarifies and authorize the intent of the existing law so that the same funds appropriated in Public Law 37-135 is used for all retirees. This measure is about fairness and parity, but it's also about values. As I said when introducing this bill, how we treat our retirees says everything about who we are as a community. This action is simple, timely, a simple, timely way to show respect, relieve a little pressure at the checkout line, and affirm that Guam takes care of its own. I appreciate, I definitely appreciate the partnership of Speaker Blas and Senator Barnett, both of whom co-sponsored this bill and echoed the concerns raised by many retirees who felt forgotten. Their support reflects a shared belief that for many retirees, $200 can mean groceries for a month, a medical copayment, or the ability to keep a roof over their head. Mr. Chair, I received a testimony mailed to me by the Department of Administration, Mr. Byrne, and I would like to read this into the record, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed.
Okay. Hoffa Day, Senator Tydegui, again, this was by the Director of Administration, Mr. Burns, November 17th, 2025, not too long ago, Mr. Chair, on Bill 208-38COR. Hoffa Day, Senator Tydegui. Department of Administration wishes to associate with the intention of this bill, which corrects an omission in Public Law 37-135. This law appropriated funds from the General Fund to pay an additional disbursement of COLA to the Gov Guam retirees who retired from the executive branch or agencies funded in whole or in part by the General Fund. However, it did not mandate payment for these additional COLA dispersments by agencies for which revenues are derived from other funds and services. for which revenues are derived from other funds and services. These retirees therefore did not receive the same additional payment. Your bill introduced on October 13th, 2025, and the Governor's Letter of October 15th to the Retirement Fund highlighted this discrepancy. Arrangements were made, then made by GGRF, the Guam Retirement Fund, and DOA to pay out the omitted disbursement. I am pleased to report that all such agencies are or have settled their consequence obligations with DOA and partially to, partly has been restored. Additionally, in October 23rd, 2025, the Governor ordered early release of the FY2026 COLA payment. DOA thanks you for introducing this bill, but is pleased to report that this objective was achieved administratively. Sisus Massey, Edward M. Byrne. Now, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that DOA and GGRF ensured that retirees received their COLA payments, you know, however, I have also still received calls to my office waiting for their COLA payment to be paid. So I'm curious, you know, this letter says it has been paid, so I'll definitely direct them to Department of Administration for their payment. However, since the supplemental COLA was authorized by statute using excess funds, I would like legal counsel to review how these payments were extended administratively to autonomous agencies, retirees without explicit statutory authority. I would also ask, Mr. Chair, to look into this so that we can clarify the proper process moving forward in our next budget hearing. Although the omitted COLA payments resolved administratively by Public Law 37-135, it did not expressly authorize inclusion of retirees from autonomous agencies and public corporations. Without this amendment, there still remains a legal ambiguity between legislative intent and administrative execution. The supplemental COLA was created through an act of the legislature using the FY2024 excess revenues, which is a public law appropriation. Any subsequent expansion of eligibility should likewise be legislatively confirmed to preserve the constitutional separation of power over appropriation. So that, Mr. Chair, is my comments in regards to DOA's testimony today and, and so I'm, I'm really, at this point, I'm happy that our COLA payments are being paid out, but was it done legally? You know, and this is a question I have that hopefully you, as the Oversight Chair, can, and the Oversight Chair of Finance can answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
Sisus Massey, Senator Tidegui, and certainly that will be part of the record of this public hearing. And so we will do that and we will also make sure that you get that correspondence back as the author of this bill. So I will now open for our colleagues to have some questions or comments. Well, there's no one here for question, but comments definitely to, on the bill. So Senator Barnett, you recognize.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair, and I just wish to associate myself with the comments of the bill's prime sponsor. I've, as recently as last week, also received concerns from some of the employees that they have yet to receive this COLA. And I, again, just agree with the points brought up by the sponsor and I'd like to kind of get to the bottom of this. And I'm, I'm a little scratching my head why we didn't receive testimony confirming these payouts from the autonomous agencies, Mr. Chair. So I just hope that the committee can do the due diligence and get the straight answers. And Sisus Massey for the opportunity to comment on the bill.
Sisus Massey, Senator Barnett, and I do share your concerns and certainly we will get to the bottom of it as, you know, it will either negate or renecessitate the bill going forward if there are, particularly if there's any missing payments so that the committee will do its, its job as per this public hearing and the requests. Senator Talahe, I recognize.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair, and as stated by the author of the bill, it's unusual for them to say they associate with the intention of the bill, but we did it already regardless of whether we had written authority to do it or not. I very much question how they had the authority to do this with, if that was the case, then this language, which was in every budget bill prior to this one, this year's, was it ever necessary? Or is the administration saying they can pay out COLA as they please? That's the first I've ever heard of any executive branch doing that. There is, this is language that was originally omitted in the budget bill and then the Governor's fiscal team, including BBMR and DOA, did not catch that in its review of the bill, I guess, coming out of the committee. And then they went ahead and told the sponsor, yes, this is good. We need to make sure that these other retirees from all the autonomous agencies are going to be paid. We should put this authority, this language that authorizes them to pay that in, into a new bill. She did that, they approved of the language. And then today we get testimony saying, we did it already, it's done, no need for the written authority. The fiscal note says, it kind of says that we should have go forward with the bill. I'm not sure the date of this one, if it was, it's prior to the testimony, of course, the today's testimony, this fiscal note was done back in, I don't even know, there's no date on it that I could, oh, yes, here it is, October 23rd. So back in October 23rd, BBMR and DOA thought we needed some authority for the Retirement Fund and independent autonomous agencies. In the fiscal note, it says, "The bill constitutes continuing authority for cash flow purposes only and shall lapse upon full reimbursement of any advances made thereunder." If it's, so I guess, I'm not sure, they don't, in their letter, they're not, they're coy, they're not really very direct on how they actually did this. It looks like they would just order the GovGuam Retirement Fund to advance these payments without the reimbursement from the autonomous agencies or, or else. I don't know. It says that they worked it out with the Retirement Fund, not with the autonomous agencies. So if it's not needed and that's what they're trying to say, then that's fine. I'm very happy that all the autonomous agencies received their COLA. I'm glad the Governor saw fit, given the budget that we appropriated, to release those COLA payments already and to release them early and because we had so many people calling our offices in desperate need of their COLA payments. These are retirees again who retired with very, very reduced salaries in those days and not adjusted at all for cost of living. And so this is a, the government's way of making a slight adjustment for cost of living, but still short for the needs of retirees and many, many, for many of those retirees. But again, we're thanking them for their service to the government of Guam for all those years. We thank them for their patience in release of these COLA funds and to those in the autonomous agencies who has to wait a little longer. And so I'm glad that they, they have, according to this, they have received their money, according to DOA. So if anyone has not received their COLA, $200 additional COLA payment, please call Senator Telo's office right away. Yes, because, yeah, according to DOA, all of, all of those have been taken care of already. So I certainly hope that that is the case. Again, I support the author's request to have this really investigated and just see what the mechanism was. I think that will further inform us in budget deliberations as to what authority the Governor has to do things without it being authorized in, in, in law. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Massey, Senator Talahe, I'll also direct your attention that this is an omission in Public Law 37-135. So that would be the 37th Guam Legislature. So would the author like to close on any?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chair, and thank you. And again, you know, this, the letter that we received today, November 17th, 2025, today, there's that one, that one paragraph that reads, "I am pleased to report that all such agencies are or have settled their consequence, consequent obligation with DOA and parity has been restored." And so how is it restored, Mr. Chair? I, I have no clue since we are the body that decides who, I mean, what, we are the purse strings. We give the authority to pay out, to provide a budget for this government to follow, who gets paid. And, you know, it's just, I'm dumbfounded how all of a sudden now they can do it without our authority. So again, we're, we're going to be, not too short from today, we're going to be going through budget again and we got to see what the legislature has. So I humbly ask that we look at our legal, to have legal look at this bill and, and especially this letter coming from the administration, because if there was any wrongdoing done by the Governor's Office, then I'm sure the Attorney General is going to want to know about this too. In fact, since I just got this letter, I will be sending it to the Attorney General for his opinion on this as well. So other than that, I humbly ask my colleagues to support a measure that would continue to give us the authority as set by law and the Organic Act of Guam to move forward with this. Because really it is about ensuring that, Mr. Chair, that there is, that we don't forget our retirees. The only success, like I said earlier, with the success of this government, we should not forget those who helped us get there. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
Sisus Massey, Senator Tidegui, and so yes, we will also have the Office of Finance and Budget review the letter and also see what their, you know, concurrence or opinion is on the appropriation authority. So with that, this will conclude today's public hearing on 38, Guam Legislature Bill Number 195. Let's see, what do we have here, 38? Go back to the first page, the bills that we have heard today. Well, first of all, we had the nomination once again of Mr. Beneventi, Bill 195-38. And of course, now that will conclude also 208-38. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on bills within seven calendar days from today, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Christopher M. Duñez, as Chairman of the Committee, and mailed to 163 West Chalan Sutapapa Nagatya 96910. You may also email your testimonies to senator.duñez@guamlegislature.gov. Today's public hearing is now adjourned and the time now is 11:44. Sisus Massey, and we stand in adjournment.